Father God, we turn our hearts to you and pray that you would just watch over us today. Be with those that are around the country that are injured or those who are suffering medically from COVID. We pray for those that watch over them and protect them and keep them safe. Watch over the first responders. We pray for all those that need your help this day. We pray for direction and guidance at this day, for wisdom for our meeting and pray for those of our leaders in the federal government.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item of business of the minutes. They were sent via email. Any alterations or corrections from that? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
So move. Second, home affairs say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. Payroll number 11 for calendar year 2020 totals $237,610.63. We had 167 claims totaling $434,911.44. Second, home affairs say aye. Three, zero. Okay. Vehicle bid opening.
I'm still opening.
He's so intrigued by those bids. You can't wait for those bids to open.
I'll try and remember to put a letter opener in my.
I didn't even think about bringing a letter up here.
You got one.
Roy bailed me out last time. Morning.
Good morning.
Watch Lisa's face.
Let's see. Start off with jail numbers. Right now, we're at 63 inmates. Thirty of those are pretrial superior, 12 are pretrial circuit, nine F6, and 10 DOC is where we're at this morning. That's up a little bit from a week ago. We're in the 50s. So domestics are taking a spike up. I think the COVID stuff, people being at home. We kind of predicted there would be a lot more domestic related things going on, which we're starting to see a spike of that as of late, so. As far as stuff at the jail, I have some good news. We have a new maintenance guy who started today, actually. Bob Montz came from County Highway over to the Sheriff's Department and is the new maintenance guy, so. Just got him started this morning and he will do a good job. Unfortunately, there are going to be some tough shoes to fill as far as what Junior used to do, so.
Now Josh has to hire.
Yes. Yeah, that's the only bad part about that. Create, fill one home, create another, so. That's one thing. A couple of changes at the jail. We upgraded our telecommunications system for what our inmates do. The, all the equipment was replaced in there for visitation. Before, visitation was only internal only. As far as they had to come into the lobby, we had two kiosks in the lobby and then they could visit with the inmate, which there's kiosks in each cell block. So that cuts down on the movement of the inmate instead of bringing them into the old visitation that way. That's still currently aesthetically, it looks the same. There's still two kiosks in the lobby, but they're all new. And now they can do external visits as well. So a loved one may be in, you know, Michigan. They can sign up online to do a visitation with them, so they can visit externally and internally as well, so.
Is there a small fee? Time on that?
How long?
Yes.
Yeah, 20 minutes.
Okay.
And time of day? It has to be when they're not sleeping, so. There's certain times that they're out in the day room and that's when it has to happen, so. And those are dictated online because the only time slots that are available, so if one picks one, it'll just show the other ones that are available, so. But they have to schedule it 24 hours in advance if they do it that way. It's basically four bucks for a 20-minute visit, but if they come in the lobby, it's still free, so. But four bucks versus driving from Michigan.
Right, right.
Cheap.
Cheap, yeah. So it's relatively inexpensive. We also are using a product called Chirp, which is a texting service. There, there's several ways that inmates can communicate. One by telephone, which is in their block. There's a different kiosk that they do commissary ordering from. They can email off that one. This one is actually a device that is solely for texting, that they can sign up for and use, and it's a device that they have. So we've, it's been very successful so far. There's other agencies that are using this as well. And I think through this time of what we've been going through with COVID, it's been really good for the inmates that are using it. Over half of our population is using it right now, and I think it kind of gives them something to do. I mean, there's no, they can't make phone calls off of it or anything. It's just straight.
No pictures?
No pictures. It's just straight text, so, but the emailing system they can, but everything gets approved, so. Yeah, so those are some changes as far as some of the stuff we've implemented in there. Other than that, I don't have anything else other than opening the bids. Unless anybody's got any questions? Okay. What did we have last week? Four bids? Now we got six. We're selling a Humvee.
Six.
Six.
Wow.
Wow.
People must really want that.
This is Jessica's good reporting.
Yeah, heard the credit. Yeah, we had four and a, um, okay, so Julie Eichler for Eichler House Ministries bid $1,100. What was the high bid last week? A thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Zach Hayden bid $1,300. Steve Dehoff bid $1,500. Why, opened these in the right order, didn't I?
Yeah.
So far. Kevin Woodward bid $1,349.65, and I think he did that, so I would have to say that.
Looking for the 35 cents.
Josh Maxwell bid $2,850.
That's what I like to see. Get out in front of it.
That went Canadian, right?
Yeah, right, right.
What'd you say?
Not Canadian.
Rupies or something.
And Kim Bennett bid $1,500. So it looks like $2,850 is the high bid till the next meeting.
Well, we thank him for that high bid.
So the minimum bid will be $2,900.
Twenty-eight.
Next bid needs to be at least $2,900.
Higher.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Scott, thank you. All right. Josh, we have you up next.
Dang it. Gonna show up next time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bring the money next time.
I will. That or a stamp.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, um, backhoe crew, same as last, has started the south townships. They'll be finally done next week. We are finishing today 500 West down there, that road conversion project, and then we'll bounce over to Jackson, finish a few more things. And up to Liberty, a couple in Harrison, so I'm predicting next week we'll be done with that. Then, as stated several times in the past, we'll flip-flop with the patching crew. So to skip to three there, the patching crew has started and is working the north townships, coating the roads that we are chipping ceiling this year. Back to two, we're finishing the ditch work entrances on all the road conversions. Like I said, 500 West, the south portion down by Montpelier will be done today, tomorrow, I mean, done, ready to go. We've sheet-footed everything in and everything's packed in and ready to seal this summer. Then we'll shift to 5 West up north, do that, and a thousand and all that stuff, so hopefully in the month of June. Here, if we get some good weather, we'll have everything ready to go. Duripatcher, they've done several random spots and crossings and they'll continue to do so. The list, you just keep coming in, you know, now that people are back on the roads more and semis and fertilizer trucks and so on and so forth. So, you know, we're doing that. Dust Day, first application was put down last week. It went well, no issues, everything went good. The second application for Dust Day will start next Monday, week from today, and then that will be completed. So like I said earlier, through the COVID stuff, we still are pretty much on track with that, so that should make everyone happy. Finally, the grass is growing like, I think, a foot a week in the side ditches. There are some roads that we've already mowed this year, and when you drive down them, you feel like you're in a tunnel because the grass is so high, so it's non-stop. Literally, we're in the beginning of June, we've already made the first pass on pretty much every township. There's a couple stragglers we're finishing up, and I'm just gonna turn them around and start round two again. We normally mow three times a year. This year, I can see us cutting it four. Just normally do two normal, one pass. Third is a double pass for snow, so the snow has room to blow off the road. This year, I can see doing three normal passes and then a fourth with that second. Beyond that, everything's going good. We're full staff and just rocking and rolling. To comment on the Bob thing, one of my employees fell right into it in a good sense. He's an older gentleman, was interested in the highway. I hired him as summer help. He's been shoveling, you know, at part-time wage, so very low wage, no benefits, none of that. He worked on his own before even coming here to get his CDL physical, his CDL permit, because he wants to get his CDL and long-term would like to work for us. He's worked for me in the past at a couple places that I've worked as a mechanic and, you know, knows how to drive truck and all that stuff, so. He fell into it in a good sense with Bob leaving, because with that spot opening up, that like paves the way to me not having to, you know, do a bunch of hiring and things of that sort.
Good job.
So, and with him, normally we would backfill Bob right away at the normal wage and benefits and things of that sort. With this gentleman, it was agreed upon when he came in that he will be part-time until he were to get his CDL and/or a spot opens, so we will actually benefit financially by paying him part-time wage till he gets that CDL. So for a month or so here verse backfilling with a new employee at another, you know, eight or nine dollars an hour and benefits and so forth. So it'll all work out, is what I'm getting at, so, and I've already had my replacement right there sitting there out working today. So that all was a blessing in disguise and worked out well for us.
Is there anything we can do to help him get his CDL any quicker?
No, that's on him just scheduling it with the COVID things, the CDL. It's, it's literally going to Fort Wayne and riding around in a truck with someone to get it. So they shut all that down because you can't be in a truck with someone that's obviously not six feet. So middle of June, when all that opens back up, I've been in contact with the guy that I send all our guys through, and he said, I'll call you, we'll schedule an appointment. So I would say, you know, sometime late June, sometime in July, by the time they get their back well caught up. Because there's no rush on my end, because he's not driving a truck. He's part-time summer. He's shoveling, running the oil truck, you know, kind of doing the lower-end work as the summer help does, so. It'll all work out as far as that goes and the blessing in disguise for the way things lightened out.
Good, good. Excellent.
All right. Yep, thank you. Nate.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A number of different items, some really good news. Yes, we got the bids back for both the Bridge 304 and 193 project the other week. Both of them well under the engineer's estimate, which actually brings up other questions later on I'm gonna ask about. First one, I'm just gonna go through the list of the bidders because we didn't have a formal bid opening in person. It was all kind of a digital process. Bridge 304, the engineer estimate for the project was $691,394.13. The low bid was provided by Primco at $543,405.85. Pioneer Associates Inc. was at $604,877.35. HIS Constructors at $726,678.30. RA Myers Construction Company submitted their bid for $838,208.36. So, and what I guess I'm gonna ask you to do here after I read the next one is request a permission to send out a notice of intent to award to the two low bidders. On the County Bridge 193, that's our 300 West project, the heat straightening. The engineer's estimate for just the steelwork was $180,898. And the reason that's lower than our initial discussions was that the paint portion has been removed from the project. The painting and discussions with Endot, they are pursuing action against the previous painting contractor for quality assurance issues. So in an effort with them, we're negotiating with them separately for essentially a zero-cost paint. So I want to wait to sign this contract until I get that signed by that firm, but their, Endot is stepping in, and so that's a big reason for this massive swing.
So a question I have.
Yeah.
And whether you can answer this or not, but with the paint issues, is that for the whole structure or just certain areas?
There are certain areas that are worse than others, and so it's kind of at the discretion of Wells County how much we're asking for the work to be done. I've got a scope of work that's been recommended by Bonnie Money, who is the engineer on this project, and so she's passing that around. I've not said yea or nay specifically on finalizing that. There's been some comments from the inspector who was involved as well to try to make sure that this gets a draft, but.
Will it delay the project?
Hopefully not. Hopefully not. I don't have a date yet from, from the, my bidder here as far as when they plan on starting. The biggest issue is going to be getting their contract signed with Central Painting, who was the contractor involved. Once that's signed, then they're, they've assured us that they would come in immediately after our contractor does the heat straightening to do essentially a lot of the remedial work. The painting as part of our portion of the project wasn't a large areas of the project, but it was just a large lump sum because there's so much prep work that needed to be done. It's possible from the start of the closure to the end that it may be longer, but I'm gonna try to do my best to keep that as reduced as possible. Financially, it's a fantastic situation for us because, one, it saves us. We have eligible grant money that's opened up as a result of it, and we don't have to pay even our local match on it, so it went from paying one-fourth of the cost of the paint work to zero. So that's, that's been very fortunate. I was told that wasn't gonna be the case for months and was arguing with them about that. And then finally, Endot said, no, they should actually repair this, so I kind of got my way and hopefully it doesn't delay the project too much.
That's the key.
And unfortunately, I always suspect that it's going to conflict with school when school goes back.
What's the closing estimate?
The estimate right now is gonna be about 60 days for the heat straightening, so if we go from back to back, there probably gonna be at least another 30 days, so it may be a 90-day closure, depending on the duration of heat straightening. So that's why I want, I want the schedule from, and the low bid was by Judy Excavating for Recovery. They just recently finished another bridge project for me. They came in with a low bid of $97,960. They were the only bid that I received on the project. The two firms that we had talked to before did not submit bids for the work. I suspect that the reason that their bid is so much lower than the engineer's estimate, which in talking to Dan Judy about it, he kind of knew that he would be well under that number, is because they're seeking Endot prequalifications to do this sort of work. It's not mandated on a project with this dollar amount, since it's under $300,000. We don't have to use Endot prequalified, so. And we have inspection under the current USI contract, so I can rest assured that I can lean on USI to oversee the work that it's done appropriately, so. With that, I guess I would request your permission to submit notice of intent to award, and they can prepare the contract documents.
Second, home affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you very much. With that, brings up a very interesting question, and that is the Bridge 99 project. This is on Hoosier Highway, just north of the Ash Road intersection. That's a bridge project that's well underway under design. We've actually acquired two of the three, or we're about to acquire two, finish acquiring two of the three parcels. I'm meeting with a third property owner this week. If that were, if we're able to close on the properties, would you be interested in submitting for community crossings yet this year with the remaining funds? And I didn't put this whole total out there, but the current engineer's estimate for the Bridge 99 project is about $725,000. The match that we would be eligible for, the remaining match funds from the 2020 million dollars, you're allowed up to a million dollars through community crossings. With reduction in these costs from both of these, we have about $518,000 in eligible match. It's 518,975 and like 61 cents if we want to get down to the penny. The project.
Thank you.
I know you're writing all the, writing down the cents.
65 cents.
So it's not, it doesn't perfectly optimize the funds, but if we were to apply for this project, Bridge 99, if it comes in exactly at the engineer's estimate, you're looking at about a 71% would be paid for through the Endot grant, not the 75%. So you're gonna be overcapping your match a little bit, but it certainly would not be a project that would be built until really next year anyway. So the, our local match money wouldn't be coming out of the 2020 budget. It's gonna be coming out of the 2021 budget. The nice part is, is you're eligible for another million dollars in 2021 under the current program, short of them changing it. So if you're interested, I need to start the process to be, to prepare the project.
We had this scheduled for what year?
We're looking at applying for this project next year, but it's one of the few that are done.
We have extra money, so if we don't use the extra money, we lose that much, but if we do use it, we're spending 4% more than we might have to otherwise.
Exactly.
It'll be next year.
Yeah, so.
That may make sense to do it.
I do too.
Yeah.
And I mean, potentially, we could look at other projects if you wanted to do those yet for this year. It's just I have the plans ready for this one. And then, so what we can do is now say next year in 2021, shuffle some other projects in, whether there are different bridge projects or there are other road projects. I think we talked a little bit about an intersection north of Craigville as being something that we may want to do, but that's gonna be fairly small. It just would give us some more time to prep those. I'd hate to see those pushed off or rushed those to try to fill in this lot, so. That's, that's just my, my recommendation to this point, and then I'll spend some months working with Josh on some other roads potentially.
It's possible too. When it goes out, it might come in lower than that.
Correct. If it's lower than, you're only gonna get your 75%. As you've seen with these, usually I try to keep the engineer's estimates heavy, but not anywhere close to as heavy as what we saw in those bids. That's, I think a lot of this is due to why you saw the low bids, is we were generous on scheduling. We allowed them essentially the full-time period to try to fit it into their schedule. So the contractors bidding this work, we're looking to try to earmark future projects, because they're just not sure what other communities are gonna put out for bid. So they're just trying to fill their books up, bid as much to see how the COVID economy or post-COVID economy is going to be. So that works in our favor, and I'm certainly not gonna complain about that. Certainly, I'm hoping it doesn't jeopardize other grant funds in the next few years.
I would make a motion to move forward on it.
Second.
Home affairs say aye?
Aye.
Easy real.
Okay. Bridge 56, this is the one on 600 West. Judy Excavating's been working on that for a number of weeks now. Final grading and guard rail were installed on Friday, so it was actually opened up to traffic, so all the barricades are off. There may be some limited closures when they go out to put straw and seed down for the, for restoration work, but other than that, it should be open to local traffic. And with the traffic volumes out there, that shouldn't be a problem, so I'm glad to see that project on. I'm glad to see that project on schedule, and, uh, it's gonna be, we're gonna have some expenses on that one. It's gonna be somewhat over the original estimate, we know it would be. Uh, there were some field entrances that we had to address ourselves, and then one that was done by a private property owner because it was not, it did not exist prior to the work, so, um, we've worked with them on that, so overall, that's open. Yep, uh, Wells County Bridge 51, this is one of the federal aid projects for 2025. Endot has approved our contract with Engineering Resources, I have that agreement for your consideration. The total for that contract is a not-to-exceed fee of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, and that would be coming from the Cume Bridge Fund for that project, we'll set that aside.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zero.
I have, uh, two utility permits, one from Citizens Telephone, this is for work down in Jackson Township between Seven South and, it says a hundred south, it's actually, should be a thousand south, in the Mountain Zion area, and another one for BSM Utilities, it's actually for MediaCom.
And the one from Mountain Zion, they also have to deal with the ones that Jared was talking about.
They're gonna have to deal with drainage board, yep, so this would be, if you wanted to make this conditional approval upon drainage board approval, then, then I can simply hold those until the next drainage board meeting.
So be it, that motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zero.
All right, and, uh, let's see, Roger here, I talked to him a little bit about, uh, Security Pro's, the camera system, I don't, I think we left it kind of somewhat open if I can directly negotiate with Security Pros and getting the Bridge 193 camera system, trying to move forward with that contract. I did meet with, um, Roger on Thursday last week to talk about it. Um, he seemed to be, felt that this was the better system at the lower cost, easier to use, so he was in support of it. Um, but certainly, I don't see him here, so.
Did you have a chance to review a contract?
I never got a, I haven't, they have not modified their contract. Um, they wanted pending approval to move forward with that contract. They said, "We'll just wait until we get that approved," that this is the way we wanted to go.
If Roger's okay with it, and we can have Roy look at it, and we'll have to provide him something to look at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Roy needs to be on board with the language of the contract, so.
Yeah, and I can, I can direct them that it's our interest or intent to do that, just to have that upgraded con- or updated contract, I'll turn that in, have a review at the next meeting then, all right?
Okay.
Appreciate it, any other questions for me?
Thanks, Nate.
Lot of stuff going on, hopefully we're closing some things out, we'll get these more on the way, so, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate, appreciate it.
Um, I have a coronavirus relief fund acceptance cer- certification that needs Blake's signature. This, um, allows us to potentially get reimbursement for Wells County in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. That's just if we have spent that money, we can get reimbursed for it, is my understanding.
Yeah, there's language of how to fill out all the paperwork.
But the first thing is, um, this.
Motion approved, Blake's signature.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Do the other jurisdictions know this?
Left in the three hundred and some thousand.
Even Mito got money.
Right.
Yeah, I, if they're watching their.
But they're supposed to go through the county on that, right?
Hmm, that I'm not sure of.
Very possible with Chad.
I thought from what I read, other than, uh, if you had a municipality over five hundred thousand or whatever, they could apply directly, but other than that, I thought that county was involved. I mean, the counties got their own figure, but all those other jurisdictions have, have money also.
So could this possibly be a blanket for the whole, all municipalities, or?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I remember seeing the list of like seven, nine. But it was for expenditures through the rest of the year, so it's.
Right.
Reimbursed for things you haven't incurred yet.
Right.
Right.
But it has to be COVID-related.
It's related. You gotta space them out, they're, they're too close, we can't socially distance. The highway employees need socially distanced, so we have to build a new highway garage.
At some point. At some point in time, that will happen.
Mr. President, I have a, uh, request. The street fair would like to use the Courthouse Plaza from Sunday, September 20th through Sunday, September 27th for the street fair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zero.
And then the cyber policy, did we wanna think about the cyber policy at all? Would you like general insurance to come?
Oh, the additional insurance. You see that, right, one was certain, uh, what was it, a deductible, or? Yeah, there were two quotes, a million and a half a million.
And Roger thought the half a million was enough.
Yeah, I mean.
They look okay as far as.
It's one of those things, it's, who knows? I mean, if there are, if the Russians are already asking.
Yeah, the Russians are asking.
Blake for money to bail me out. Who knows what? Could be Kevin next time for a lot more money.
I never told you about that, did I?
I don't think they like my numbers.
Roy wanted all these Amazon gift cards. So I had to snap a picture and send it to him.
But it wasn't for me, it was for some charity or whatever.
Yeah, COVID relief charity or something. It was dot ru. Okay.
And what's the total amount for the five hundred thousand dollars policy?
Annually, four thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
I guess we think it's worth it.
If you talk to Huntington County, they would say yes, I think, based on the fact they were hijacked, well.
Well, I looked through the news article I had sent you from, it was in the news banner about, I think, Bedford, uh, Lawrence County. I didn't notice at the very last line said they have insurance, so I felt like maybe calling the Bedford County and see about the claims, but at the seminar that, that Barnes and Thornburg had for us, it's like, you know, this is nothing, you know, you'll, you'll want it if, when, when you get hit, not if you get hit.
So I would make the motion approve of the five hundred thousand coverage.
When, when will it take effect? It won't be retro, it'll be a portion.
Right, and we have to fill in the effective date, I believe, desired effective date.
Effective today.
I would say June one, today.
Do I have a second?
I thought I did.
Oh.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I thought it really landed, so I thought I agreed.
Caught up in the moment.
Maybe.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Tomorrow's election day, get out and vote.
Absolutely.
Courthouse is open.
Six AM, six PM.
Polling booths are open. That would be voting centers for verification. Voting centers. That have voting booths.
If there is nothing else, I want to entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.